...January Penridge School Board Meeting. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Cron, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kastner?
Here.
Mr. Deming? Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Igomo?
Here.
Mr. Sarnice?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yornell?
Here. Thank you. At this point, we have recognition of a long-serving member of the community, Dr. Rattigan.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are recognizing retired State Representative Mr. Paul Clymer. For the past 34 years, Mr. Clymer has given dedicated service to his constituents, who included the Penridge community. And, Mr. Clymer, even though I've only worked with you a little over a year, it became very apparent to me, your commitment to education. I know you served as Chair of the Education Committee, and I know you've understood our many financial concerns, including such as examples of Peasars and charter schools, and also the recent changes that districts are facing and the implications of those, such as the past trash legislation and the child abuse clearances. So, we just want you to know how much we greatly appreciate what you have done for us. So, we're presenting you with a plaque that says, "Presented to Representative Paul Clymer in grateful appreciation for your support and dedicated service to the people in the Penridge community, 1980 to 2014." So, Rep. Clymer, please join us. And I believe Dr. Yornell would like to say something to you as well.
Representative Clymer, it's been a pleasure working with you. I know you're legendary for the constituent services that you've offered the community, but I think that's also true in terms of the school district and school board and administration. One particular thing that I remember is the issue of trying to resolve the problem out front here at the high school when it was rebuilt back in the early 2000s, and I know you helped us greatly in dealing with some of the red tape in places like Pendott, and I think many other times performed that same sort of service. I also know that you are often at our schools when people are honored or when there's some sort of special occasion, especially on Veterans Day. So, I certainly appreciate the service that you've given us, the members of the community and the district and the board. Thank you very much, and good luck in your retirement.
I do have a few remarks, and it's been a delight and really a joy to be involved in education and to participate, in particular, in the three school districts in 145th Penridge, Quakertown, Palisade. So, well, thank you Superintendent Rattigan, administrators, faculty, and members of the school board for this very special recognition and this beautiful plaque that you have presented me. Trust me, it will always be a special treasure for me in my home. When I chaired the House Education Committee, a reoccurring theme that came to me was that darkness can present itself not only in areas that we call pitch black, but in other situations as well, excluding the visually handicapped. Those in darkness, and I will elaborate, will always struggle and grope to find their way through life, reaching but perhaps never succeeding. As an example, a student lacking the basic skills of reading, writing, and doing the math, as we say, which are important components of critical thinking, could struggle in achieving the American dream. Secondly, those who ignore or dismiss as unimportant the sacrifices, the courage, and commitment of past generations that provided the building blocks for this great republic could witness its demise. This nation, that is such a great nation, could become a third-rate republic, no longer the leader in the free world, no longer providing for freedom of economic opportunity and freedom from religious persecution. Happily, here at Penridge, educators have kept off these blinders and have provided the students with the opportunity to have a solid academic education, to have an exceptional vocational technical learning experience, and have steadily explained to the students the importance of good citizenship and patriotism, thus keeping those building blocks from crumbling and preserving our freedoms. And to that, I tip my hat to Penridge High School and of course others as well. Thank you, and God bless you. I'm going to go back to the wrestling match and see whether or not, how Penridge is doing. They won the first six matches, and they were ahead when I left 34 Penrith, Port Harrow, Orsham Wells.
I also have another presentation tonight. January is School Board Recognition Month, and the fact that we are recognizing our board members in the month of January coincides perfectly with our Takes Pride theme this month, which is service. Students have been reminded this month that service is an act of helpful activity. People who give service take action to help someone or to do them a favor. Each of our nine board members are giving generous service to the Penridge School District. All of them first took action and ran for office, and on a daily basis, they give of their time and talents to assist the Penridge School District in being the best that it can be.
At this point, we'll move to questions and comments from guests.
And in working with each one of them, I can honestly say that I am impressed with their dedication. Some people, I think, believe that it's only that they show up for meetings, but there's a lot of reading and homework that needs to be done behind the scenes, and I can attest
Please state your name, your municipality of residence.
to the fact that every one of them comes prepared and truly cares about this community.
I have three names on the sign-in sheet. The first is, and I will apologize if I murder the name, Ms. Kukuchka Man.
So, it's my pleasure to work with them, and we have a certificate for you honoring you
Okay, my name's Karen E. Kukuchka, man, West Rock Hill Township.
and thanking you for your generous service. So, a round of applause, please, for our board members.
I'm speaking concerning the termination of the Penridge Adult Evening School. Good evening, board members. Thank you for your years of sponsoring the adult evening classes. Thank you for allowing the public to use the buildings for the adult evening classes, whether they were for flower arranging, mature driver for AAA, or volleyball classes. My father also took many classes, especially dancing classes, over the years. Penridge Adult Community Theater used your facilities. I have taken computer classes and, at various times, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday volleyball classes. I met my husband at the volleyball classes. We both have continued to take the volleyball classes since 1992. I ask that you please continue supporting the adult evening school and not terminate it, particularly the volleyball class. I believe having the adult evening school allows citizen participation in community development. By that, I mean that through the interaction amongst participants, there is shared learning, knowledge, and networking benefiting the Penridge area. After a working day, many people find enjoyment in an organized recreational sport experience during the evening hours. Sure, there are many classes now online, but you cannot bump, set, nor spike online. Some of us cannot afford the yearly YMCA membership, so we look to other community opportunities. I thank all previous boards for providing some low-income residents with access to recreation programs and services, including volleyball. My letter of December 16th, 2014 directed your attention toward society extolling the benefits of exercising and the need for American adults to be active on a daily basis. As the letter stated, volleyball promotes physical activity and is fun. The advantages of volleyball include building a self-esteem, self-confidence, and social skills, and volleyball can serve as a foundation for character and individual development. Each semester, I meet someone new, whether young whippersnappers who make me feel younger, singles who draw me to a higher level of playing, or married couples. We all know the Beatles tunes, but we especially enjoy the sport. I want to believe my adult evening school fees have helped make the school budget go further. I believe that the volleyball classes often had waiting lists and were at full capacity. I believe our participants followed all school rules and regulations, such as no food in the gym, no trash, and putting away the pieces of equipment properly. I believe the school board pays insurance for all who enter the school after hours, be they adult evening class participants, teachers, students, parents. I do not know why, or why now, the adult evening school must be abandoned, nor why its termination was so sudden and unpublicized. Could something be moved out where players could pay a fee to the school district, omitting the UBCTS middleman, to be able to play at the same gym Thursdays or even twice a week? Some places have a drop-in policy where a player could pay $90 fee to the person in charge after they've signed a paper in place, such as for your community recreational swim. So, again, I respectfully request that you reconsider supporting the Penridge Adult Evening School slash volleyball class. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Second name is Ms. Snyder-Sidler.
Good evening. My name's Donna Snyder-Sidler. I live in Hilltown Township. I believe the board members received an email from me again concerning the same situation that Karen just addressed. I talked to her. We worked on her letter together. I just wanted to reiterate, I've been a teacher with the adult evening school program for probably 30-plus years, going back to the early 1980s. I feel it's a great program for the community. I know my class in particular is, as she stated also, always full with waiting lists to get people into the class. Again, my question again is, why was this decision made, I think, quickly abruptly? I don't know. I was given excuses from Dr. Yornell and Mr. Waggonceller from the Joint Operating Committee as well, but again, there was no public awareness given to anyone. I didn't see it mentioned anywhere in the Penridge School Board's meetings that they did agree to discontinue it, which I thought was a little odd myself. And again, it's a longstanding program enjoyed by many of the taxpayers within the community. I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sternle?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Linden?
I didn't get a chance to sign up since you... She wasn't there. Robert Linden, West Rock Hill Township. Two items on the agenda I just have to clarify. Item 10C4, motion to approve DeHuey Engineering to develop plans for Flagpole Memorial Area at Helmut Field. I understood from that meeting that DeHuey was going to do that as volunteer at no cost to the township, I mean to the school district. Is that correct? Second item is 10D1B, Lehigh University High School graduation, $11,000 estimated. Do we need to spend $11,000 to go to Lehigh University for graduation when we have a stadium that we spent considerable amount of money on and has 5,000 seats? That's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Linden, I will comment about Penridge graduation. That decision to move to Lehigh is more than a decade old at this point. The good news about Lehigh is that no one has to sit out in the rain or reschedule at the last moment. I would note that the last three graduations at Lehigh were all conducted on a rainy night. So, it does happen in June, sometimes not so frequently, sometimes very frequently. And I have been around long enough to know that outside graduations can be beautiful nights, wonderful experiences. They also can be a dash to finish because the lightning is in the distance and is moving in our direction. They can mean people in heels and boot shoes waddling in the mud of the field, which presumably would no longer be the case if we were to conduct it here. There are a lot of different issues, and no doubt this will be debated, but for now, we have gone to Lehigh each year. We have secured a place there. It's a priority basis. Priority has to do with when you first started having graduations at Stabler Arena. And in terms of the money, it's something that at the time this was done, there was an extensive debate about whether it would be cheaper to have it here in the Penridge community or move it to Lehigh. So, it's something that I suspect we will talk about, but for now, this is what we have been doing and will continue to do.
At this point, are there any other comments or questions?
Dr. Yornell?
Yes.
May I ask a question regarding the public comment?
Yes.
I just, the adult evening school, it's not a decision that was made here at this board. It was made by the Tech Board, and so there are three people from this board who serve on this board.
That's right.
So, could we get information at our next board meeting about why?
Absolutely.
That was done and what that means?
I can give you an overview. I think it's something, the reason it was a decision made at the Upper Bucks Career and Technical School was because some years back, because of the concern about the program's viability, and viability in part means it was always intended to be self-funding, both here and there, also at Quakertown. But Quakertown and Penridge folded their programs into the UBCTS, at least in terms of oversight, in order to try to make the program more efficient. And that hasn't necessarily happened. This past few years, there has been a deficit building in that particular program. If you look at the audits that are conducted at the UBCTS, you will notice that the adult evening school is ahead of the circus and now has a deficit actually. And there was concern about that and some other issues, the security there in particular, about security because that's an open campus, we have construction going on. So, it was decided among the JOC members and the administration of the UBCTS that this was the best course of action to eliminate it, since Penridge would have had, in order to continue the program, Penridge would have had to have further subsidized the program. It is not currently self-sustained, as it has always been, and I know that's been a comment from the public, that they feel that it is, and I'm sure it is in parts and it is not in other parts, but in recent years, it has not managed to be a self-supporting effort. If you want more specific information, I can certainly get that as well, but that's kind of summary. Anyone else in the public? If not, we'll move to... We will move to the consent calendar. Are there any items on the list from A through I that board members want voted on separately? If not, do I have a motion to approve consent calendar consisting of the minutes of the last regular board meeting on December 2nd and the special meeting on the 16th of the bills list, the general bills list, capital projects, self-insurance, food service, and student activities of the financial reports and superintendent's personnel report, plus the EDR report? Do I have a motion to approve all those? And second? Second. Moved by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Sarnice to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions from board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you. The Student Liaison Report.
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. I have two things that I wanted to talk about today, one of which is next month, on February 13th, Penrith Student Council will be hosting the Pennsylvania Association of Student Council's Region F Conference, and that will take place here at Penridge High School and have over 600 students from Bucks, Montgomery, Chester, Delaware, and Philadelphia counties. This is one of the most successful numbers that this type of conference has had in over a decade, and we're really excited about it. It's going to be a day-long conference with a guest speaker, workshops run by students, and a tasty lunch provided by Libertos, all about leadership. And it's, we're really looking forward to it. It was an uphill battle trying to confirm this place as the conference mainly on the student council organizations end, but we're really excited about it, and just as of today, Representative Stats will be speaking at the conference as well. So, we're really excited for that entire day. It's going to be a lot of fun, and we think it's going to put Penridge on the map again as a place for leadership and where leadership prospers. And then just smaller, within the high school, Student Council as an organization, we're currently evaluating and looking at new ways to boost school spirit. We noticed that Penrith students are very, very enthusiastic about being a Penrith student when they want to be, but certain, sometimes, including Spirit Days, we noticed that sometimes participation isn't as high as we want to be. So, we're in the beginning process of looking at ways we can improve school spirit, Spirit Days, and different events in general. So, hopefully next month, I'll have a much more optimistic report about school spirit, but until then, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Callens. I butted in and asked Mrs. DiBona if I could speak that day as well. So, I will be looking forward to seeing that. It occurs on Friday the 13th, as I recall. For those of us who aren't superstitious, that's no problem. So, I'm sure it'll work out very well. Next is the president's report. I will first mention the right-to-know requests. At this point, as of the 26th of January, and over the last four months, we have almost $14,891.95 in terms of the costs, direct costs, for complying with these right-to-know requests. In terms of what I'd like to speak to tonight, as we all know, there was a new governor and some new legislators elected. We spoke about that with Representative Clymer tonight. I think people always try to be hopeful and optimistic, but this is a difficult year. One of the numbers that I noted very recently was, well, two things, concerning the pension issue. Obviously, that's on many people's mind, and the numbers were not very favorable. First of all, in terms of pension liability, Pennsylvania is the third highest number. That obviously poses a large problem. The other thing that is perhaps an even more scary issue in terms of my feeling is that last year, the Pension Board reported that they made 14.1% on their investments. They're in some fairly risky investments, so they try to make good money even in years. Bad news about that, particular good news, is that that didn't reduce the liability except for a very small fraction. It still runs about $35 billion. So, it's a lot of money for someone to pay in the future or now. And I think, how does this impact us? Well, of course, it impacts us directly in terms of our budget. We have to pay monies to support that pension, and this year, the absolute value on the percentage is going up about 4%. It's one of the biggest increases. That's the bad news. The good news is that those increases will shrink in terms of the change with each succeeding year in the future, as currently projected, and that's always a bit of a guessing game. But it certainly has a huge impact on what the district can and cannot do. So, it's something to be concerned about. Don't think that most of the folks in the legislature or in the governor's office have an answer for us now, and I don't know whether they will in the immediate future, but it's certainly something that we would, or need, to have some resolution on. At this point, we'll go to a much more upbeat report, I'm sure, from Dr. Rattigan.
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. First, congratulations are in order for one of our cabinet members, our Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instructional Technology, recently earned her doctorate at Wyner University and is now Dr. Kathleen Shy. So, congratulations, Kathy. The Penridge Community Education Foundation is accepting nominations for its 2015 Friend of Education Award. If you know someone who has had a long-lasting impact on public education for Penridge students, I encourage you to submit a nomination. It could be a teacher, an administrator, a staff member, or a parent, a volunteer, school director, custodian, or bus driver, any one individual or organization who has made indelible contributions to our school community. The 2015 Friend of Education Award will be presented at a lovely evening at the Sellersville Theater on Tuesday, April 28th. I attended last year. It was a marvelous celebration of the many talents we have here at Penridge. The nominating form is on the PCEF website, where you can see Mr. Joe Ferry or Mrs. Christine Yardley for details. I'm pleased to announce that the Diesel Technology Program at the Upper Bucks Technical School has been accredited by the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation and the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence. You can read more details on our website. I'm sure by now you've heard that our students at the high school are planning a mini-thon for later this spring. Their goal is to raise $20,000 for the Four Diamonds Fund, which provides services to family of children with pediatric cancer. To raise awareness and some funds, students have launched a unique program that involved a golden toilet that may show up on your front lawn someday. It's all in good fun, though. You can pay to have it delivered to a friend, who then must pay to have it removed, or you can make a donation to ensure it never makes it to your property in the first place. Check your lawn each day, you never know when it might arrive. I don't know about that one, Mr. Callens. Anyway, I have an update for you on Nick Dion, a Penrith student who is battling leukemia. Friends and family have raised just under $20,000 to help his family with expenses, and although the doctors have a positive outlook for Nick, it will be a long road to recovery. So, hang in there, Nick, we're all pulling for you. Congratulations to the following Coral students who represented the high school at the 2015 PMEA District 11 Coral Festival on January 22nd to 24th at Abington High School, seniors Sarah Hawthorne, Richard Hay, Sam Privda, Ashley Landis, and Jassy Merity, juniors Emily Dixon and Emily Pitt, and sophomore Jeremy Noel. Congratulations. If you're a Phillies fan, chances are you'll see a Penridge grad on the field this season. That would be Kelsey Detwiler, class of 2009, who has been selected as a Phillies Bull Girl. Kelsey played softball here at Penridge before going on to Penn State, where she graduated in May 2014. for later this spring. Their goal is to raise $20,000 for the Four Diamonds Fund, which provides services to family of children with pediatric cancer. To raise awareness and some funds, students have launched a unique program that involved a golden toilet that may show up on your front lawn someday. It's all in good fun, though. You can pay to have it delivered to a friend, who then must pay to have it removed, or you can make a donation to ensure it never makes it to your property in the first place. Check your lawn each day, you never know when it might arrive. I don't know about that one, Mr. Callens. Anyway, I have an update for you on Nick Dion, a Penner student who is battling leukemia. Friends and family have raised just under $20,000 to help his family with expenses. And although the doctors have a positive outlook for Nick, it will be a long road to recovery. So hang in there, Nick, we're all pulling for you. Congratulations to the following Coral students, who represented the high school at the 2015 PMEA District 11 Coral Festival on January 22nd to 24th at Abington High School. Seniors Sarah Hawthorne, Richard Hayes, Sam Pridea, Ashley Landis, and Jassy Merity. Juniors Emily Dixon and Emily Pitt, and sophomore Jeremy Noel. Congratulations. If you're a Phillies fan, chances are you'll see a Penridge grad on the field this season. That would be Kelsey Detwiler, class of 2009, who has been selected as a Phillies Bull Girl. Kelsey played softball here at Penridge before going on to Penn State, where she graduated in May 2013, with a BA in print journalism with an emphasis on sports journalism and a minor in English. Kelsey is the daughter of Cindy Detwiler, who works at Central Middle School. Congratulations to our cheerleading team and coach, Lindsay Rack. The team won the District One Championship and finished fifth out of 110 teams. Meanwhile, Lindsay was named PIAA Cheerleading Coach of the Year. Next up are the Nationals in Orlando next month, so congratulations to the cheerleaders. Before the holidays, the Penn South Middle School Student Council conducted a blanket drive on behalf of the homeless in Philadelphia. The South Cares Blanket Drive collected more than 100 new and gently-used blankets that will be keeping the less fortunate warm this winter. Congratulations are in order for the North students, who were part of the dramatic productions this past weekend. Under the direction of Mrs. Joyce Schellenberger and Mrs. Sandy Arujow Stewart, they presented Hillbilly, Hankerin, and Fractured Fairy Tales. I was quite impressed, I must say, with the acting of these young performers. Well done, North students. And finally, mark your calendar for Thursday, March 19th through Saturday, March 21st. Stars at Penridge High School will present Les Mis School Edition, and I know everyone is working hard, and I'm looking forward to another outstanding production. So that's my report, Dr. Aronel.
Thank you. Moving to the committee reports, the first is Activities. Mrs. Yardley?
The Activities Committee met on January 14th, and all of the items that we discussed are motions tonight. And so that gives you, as we go through the motions, it gives you an idea of what we did at that meeting. So the first motion is to approve the following overnight trips. The 2015 NAFME All Eastern Honors Choir, April 9th to April 12th, 2015, in Providence, Rhode Island, and the FCC LA State Leadership Conference, March 18th to the 20th, 2015, at Split Rock Resort in Lake Harmony, PA.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the overnight trips. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Okay, the next item we discussed was the Kids Care Contract, and they gave a presentation that night. It was great, they had a PowerPoint with a lot of photos and talked about all the activities they do and that they've been in our communities 18 years, Dr. Revard? It's been a long time that they've been in, running the program in Penridge. And so they're doing, they keep adding new things, and they talked about some of the classes they have, Spanish class that they have for the kids, and chess, and they even have some National Honor Society students coming down and helping with tutoring. So that was that part of it. So now I make a motion to approve the Kids Care Successor Contract.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve an ongoing Kids Care Successor Contract. Comments or questions for board members?
Question? For Mr. Cox. Was this reviewed? Do we review these? Not to put you on the spot, but I know you usually do.
No, that's no problem. I reviewed this contract. I've made a lot of changes to it, actually. I worked with Dr. Revard on it. The current form of it meets with mine. Thank you.
Dr. Revard, how many students do we actually have, roughly, in the Kids Care? I know it varies from day to day and week to week. Do you have any deal for that?
I would have to go, look, they do the presentation, I have all those numbers on.
That's not like 390 kids?
Yeah, I think that's, for morning and afternoon, and most of them are dual. They do the AM and the PM. And then it's a different group of kids that are there for the day-off programs. But it's slowly been increasing since the big drop was when we moved sixth grade out of the elementary schools. And also that year, we required them to have Kids Care program in every elementary school instead of the district transporting. So the numbers have slowly gotten back up to where they were with only K-5 at this point. So they built it back up where it was back in, I think, 2006 or '07.
354. Thank you. In 2014. Any other questions on this motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Okay, I make a motion to recommend the approval of the 2015-16 Penridge School District Calendar. The following holidays will be designated as local holidays, November 27th, December 24th, both in 2015, and then in 2016, January 18th, February 15th, and March 25th.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mr. DeBona to approve the 2015 Penridge School Calendar in terms of local holidays. Comments or questions?
I just have a couple of comments about the calendar. The start date is before Labor Day, because Labor Day is late this year. And Dr. Revard told us that all of the days except for one match up with Quaker Town and Palisades, so that we have the tech school can be open. And he said, I believe, on that one day, the tech school will be open. So that's an important part of the calendar. And it's very similar to past years. The only change are some of the teacher in-service days before the start of school related to back-to-school night. So, and first day of school is August 31st.
Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Okay, and the last motion is to approve the sister schooling program. And before I do that, Dr. Revard gave a great summary, and I just want to highlight that the pilot program that we had this year, he estimates that we saved about, the net savings was about $222,000 through sister schooling. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the sister schooling program.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the sister schooling program. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Yardley?
The next Activities Committee meeting is scheduled for March 11th this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Academic performance. The Academic Performance Committee was scheduled to have a meeting during January. It was postponed due to illness. And the next meeting now will be held on Tuesday, February 3rd. It will be held here in this room. And the primary topic, not the only topic, but the primary topic is a discussion about the various proposals for curriculum improvement for the coming school year. Next would be facilities, and that would be Mr. Casper.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met on December 16th and on January 12th. There's four motions tonight. Can we go right into the first one? One, motion to obsolete items of A, B, C, D, as listed.
Do we have a second to that motion? To obsolete items?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the obsolete items list. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The second motion is to approve a change order, as listed, from Penn Builders, deducting the amount of $34,222 for unused allowance.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Sarnish to approve the Penn Builders Deduct. Comments or questions for board members?
That was at South, just for the record.
Do we know whether that project is finally, quote, "finished," unquote? Meaning, we have all these deducts? Yes? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Casper?
The third motion is to approve the Red Cedar Property Resolution.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the Red Cedar Property Resolution. This is basically disposition of the property that is held by all 13 school districts in Bucks County, but has been used under the auspices of the IU. And I know Mr. Cox has reviewed this resolution, approved it. I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he has approved it. So I would urge that we do this, so that the IU hopefully can dispose of this, since they are not currently using the property. Other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Miller, I hope you will take that to the IU, that we have approved it by now. Thank you. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Fourth motion is to approve Dewey Engineering to develop plans for Flagpole and the Memorial Area at Helmand Field.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the Dewey Engineering Development Plans, or to approve Dewey Engineering to do the development plans. Comments or questions for board members?
I have a comment on this. Tonight, in the prior meeting, it came up in the public comment, and I'm glad Jeff's here. Since Dewey is our engineer, they usually draw all of our plans. I think Mr. Spatafor, I can't recall exactly what he volunteered to do. I think this is what he volunteered to do at no cost to us. Sort of a rendering of what the entrance would look like with this. So I believe Mr. Linden asked if we would be paying our regular fees, or, not in those exact words, but what I took from that is, will we be paying fees to actually develop the plan, so, you know, as part of the ongoing project there? I think we're kind of, do we need to know this tonight? We're opening bids soon, so this isn't going to make it into the bid, this will be an add-on. Is that right? What's the best way to describe this? And then answer the question.
We put the Flagpole into bids, so we were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, and we knew it was going to come through, so we put it into the bids. So it'll be part of the bid opening. I think Dewey volunteered to do the sketch to get this far, maybe a little further for Mr. Revard and the Ad-Hoc Committee.
So that's where I'm confused. If we've already done that, then why is it a motion tonight? That was what I wanted to ask. And that's why I wasn't sure if this was, we kind of did this without a motion. And I was wondering if the motion is to sort of backtrack to the drawing.
You're in charge of something.
That's all. Can we pull it off there, if it's in the bid? I mean, it's something that should be tabled. I don't know what we're approving them to do, since it's already been done.
Is it a separate item in the bid, something like an add-alternate, or is it just part of the plans?
We now put it right into the bid. But what Dewey's reducing their fee score is the rendering of the drawing and to continue to develop it as the Ad-Hoc Committee wants. So what's in the bid is strictly a Flagpole, because we have a smaller one at the other end, so decided we needed one anyway. But the memorial part of it is what you're approving Dewey to do.
Okay. That's where I'm getting lost in this. So I don't know if we need to vote on it, or we already did vote on it. And if it's already included, then we've already voted on it, as I said that twice. And the memorial part, to me, is the addition, not the Flagpole.
Correct.
So this says for Flagpole and Memorial Area. So I'm not trying to make a big deal out of this, but if we already voted on it, and Mr. Linden raised the question, so I thought I'd just take a shot at it. I guess my only concern is, what is the district telling Dewey to do here? And so I guess if Dewey is going to do something as essentially a show of good faith, as like a donation to the district, he can just do it, and then the district can accept whatever Dewey produces. So the drawing at issue is really for the memorial area. Because it sounds like the district has already approved Dewey to do the Flagpole sketch. Maybe I'm making this more complicated now than it needs to be. I guess, my point is that Dewey is going to do something for the district for free, and I don't think the board needs to approve that.
I tend to agree. I think what Mike might have said is, because there was discussion about the bids being opened and in the next board meeting, that if the board did not approve him to move forward with the rendering and to get started with the tribute to the Flagpole, then he would do it for free. So I think the board's kind of just approving them to move forward, whether it's going to be free or not, we're still approving Dewey to move forward with this. There may not be a cost associated with it.
Let me just suggest, then, that if Dewey is doing this for free, it should just do it, rather than there be some confusion as to what the price was, or something unstated in the motion. That's my suggestion.
To put that Flagpole into the bid documents doesn't cost Penridge any more money. It will when bids come in, maybe, but it doesn't cost us more money for Dewey. It'll charge us to put another component into that. It's an overall project. So again, the way I see it is, it's a donation from Dewey to put the Flagpole into the bid specs and to develop what he's already developed for Dr. Revard. Does that make sense?
Well, it does to me, because we kind of talked about it. And then tonight, I guess, they just got these tonight at 6:00. So I apologize, if I would have known about it, I would have maybe talked to the administration about this motion, because I would have had the same question then. But I just want us to do it the right way, that's my point. So if we don't have to vote, then we shouldn't vote. You just, yeah, you just table it. I mean, I don't know what the terms of this engagement are. You can't tell from the motion. Usually, if you're engaging someone to do something, you move to approve their contract, and it has terms and conditions. So that's what, so it should either be a motion to do something like that, or it shouldn't be a motion at all, would be my advice. So you can just move to table it and have a vote on the motion to table it, if that's the board's preference. Can we defeat it, zero to eight? Yes. You can do that, too.
I think part of this was that when the proposal originally came to the district, it came from the Veterans Group. And the question was whether or not what they were proposing and what Dewey Engineering thought might be a more appropriate memorial could be aligned. And I don't know whether that part has been accomplished or not. I don't know what the situation is in terms of whether the Veterans Group has seen, I assume not, they have not seen these, or they have seen them.
There was a representative here tonight from the class of 64. Yeah, so he saw it tonight, and he said that he was, right, he is pleased with it. I mean, as far as the idea of, you know, they had an original idea of having trees, and he is pleased that this is a better idea, yeah, better memorial, better tribute to the people, so.
Let me ask this, would it be accurate if the motion, said motion to approve Dewey Engineering to develop plans for that Flagpole Memorial Area at Helmand Field, had no charge to the district? Is that essentially what's occurring?
It seems in this motion, since we've already done, since we already have.
Right, so just amend the motion to say that, and then the district's not contracting? Don't ask me, you're this solicitor. No, I mean, if that's what is occurring here, then just simply amend the motion to say that, and then vote on the amended motion.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's what he said. I think, what I remember is Mr. Spatafor saying that if the board did not approve it, he would, him would donate his time, not Dewey. I don't think there was any talk about Dewey doing this for free.
It sounds to me like there's sufficient confusion that we should table the motion, at the very least, and get clarification. So do we have a motion to table this existing motion?
Well, we have one out there floating around now, so I can just change that to a remotion to table it?
Yes.
Then I would make that motion to table this.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. DeBona to table the motion, the existing motion. Now, on the tabling, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is tabled. Eight-zero. Okay. Back to you, Mr. Casper, moving on.
Sorry about that.
No, not a problem.
And the next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for February 2nd.
Thank you. The Finance Committee is next, and that's Mr. Sarnish.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Dr. Aronel. The Finance Committee also met on the same dates, December 16th and January 12th, and I have three motions tonight. The first is a motion to approve- The first is a motion to approve the contracts A and B as listed on the agenda.
Do we have a second to the motion to approve those two contracts?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnice, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnice?
Second is a motion to approve the request from Sellersville Borough to remove the crossing guard at North Main and Noble Streets in Sellersville.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnice, seconded by Mrs. Miller to accept the request from Sellersville Borough regarding removal of a crossing guard. Comments or questions for board members? I presume the administration has no concerns about this, not having this.
Right. There's nobody there. There are no students that are crossing guard longer.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Next, Mr. Sarnice?
The final one is a motion to authorize Malle LLP to complete the agreed-upon procedures engagement at an estimated total cost of $12,500.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnice, seconded by Mrs. Miller to authorize Malle to complete the agreed-upon procedures. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnice?
And the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for February 2nd.
Thank you. The Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The BCIU Bucks County Intermediate Unit convened in Doylestown, January 20th. We were met with a presentation and treats offered by the WOW program, which is an anagram for "We're Outstanding Workers," and I need to mention my daughter's a 2005 graduate of that program. The WOW program has been in existence for several years and moved from the Vod Tech to the Haycock Elementary Building when that building became available. The program is for young adults aged 18 to 21 with disabilities and teaches life skills and real-world experience while providing a range of services to the community. Some of the programs are "We're Blooming," dedicated to yard work, "We're Scantastic," which digitizes VHS tapes and photos, "We Care," which takes day-old bread to local food pantries, delivers meals on wheels, and boxes of donated food to the elderly and disabled in senior housing. "We Cater" is another program, where the workers make cookies and cakes while learning to bake, shop, package, deliver, take orders. They also organize and deliver toys for tots, donations, and grow a vegetable garden. No job is too small to call, so if you are in need of any of these services, I highly recommend calling 215-529-2601. This year, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit operates 20 multiple disabilities classrooms across Bucks County. Teachers and staff working in these classrooms are focused on increasing the literacy awareness of each student. Reviews of curriculum and technology resources have taken place, ensuring staff has the necessary materials to increase acquisition of skills in the areas of vocabulary, comprehension, fluency, phonics, and phonemic awareness. On Thursday, June 26, 2014, Governor Corbett signed Act 21 into law. This bill codifies school-based suicide prevention with the following provisions, beginning with the 2015-16 school year. Each school entity shall adopt an age-appropriate youth suicide awareness and prevention policy, shall include four hours of training in youth suicide awareness and prevention every five years for professional educators in grades 6 through 12. May incorporate a youth suicide awareness and prevention curriculum into its existing instructional program. The Department of Education shall develop a model youth suicide awareness and prevention policy, develop a model youth suicide awareness and prevention curriculum, and compile, develop, and post guidelines and materials for training of educators. The Act also deals with child exploitation awareness education. The Bucks County IU is collaborating with the Suicide Prevention Task Force and the Programs and Services Advisory Council to assess needs to support the Act 71 requirements. In response to several suicides in Bucks County, Bucks County IU took the lead in developing the Bucks County Youth Suicide Prevention Task Force in April 2005. Board action items included the approval, the appointment of the new board member, Mrs. Allison Smith, representing the Pensbury School District, the treasurer's report, fund transfers, bills for payment, budget revisions, contracts and agreements, policy revisions, human resource items, et cetera. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 17th, to be held at 7 o'clock at the Administration Building in Doylestown. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. The next is the Personnel Committee. Mr. Demming is not with us tonight, so I will note that the committee actually met on January 14th, and there are two motions to bring to the board tonight. The first is to approve the waiver of expulsion hearing and rights under the Pennsylvania School Code for the students identified as 2014-15E-WO1 and 2014-15E-WO2. So I move that we approve that waiver of expulsion hearing and rights. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Yarnell, seconded by Mr. Casper to approve the motion concerning the waiver of expulsion hearing and rights. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Second motion is to approve the event compensation summary. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Yarnell, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the event compensation summary. Any comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. The next Personnel Committee will be scheduled for, or is scheduled for, March 11th, 2015. Policy Review Committee, that's also Mr. Demming. So the Policy Review Committee met the same night as the Personnel, which was January 14th. There are a number of motions here, I believe two motions. The first motion has to do with the first reading, and the first reading of Policy Number 100 on comprehensive planning. In addition, the language in policies that have referred to comprehensive planning, or now we'll need to refer to comprehensive planning or plan, as opposed to the strategic plan or planning wording that has been in these policies in the past. There also is Number 317, which is on conduct and disciplinary procedures, 317.1, educator misconduct, and 806 on child abuse. So I move that we approve the first reading of those policies as listed. Do I have a second?
I have silence. I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved by Dr. Yarnell, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve first reading of the policies as listed. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. The second motion is to recommend the second reading approval of Policy Number 618 on student activity and funds, and Number 801 on public records. I move that we approve the second reading. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Yarnell, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt. Comments or questions on these two second reading policies? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. As with Personnel, the next Policy Review Committee meeting is scheduled for March 11th here. At this point, we move to the Upper Bucks Technical School Committee. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Upper Bucks County Tech School met on December 18th of 2014 and January 15th, 2015. Minutes are posted on the Upper Bucks County Technical School website. A few points were, at the January 15th meeting, Mr. Moser, one of the teachers at the school, spoke regarding a community service trip proposal. Basically, he has done this in the past, taken students to areas that may have had, been impacted by storms, and they go and spend a number of days helping to rebuild those communities. It's a great learning experience for those students, not only in the hands-on experience, but just the life experiences that they get there as well. That will be, he didn't have specifics, just because it's not planned, he's not sure where the need is right now, but he will let us know going forward. There was a report on the construction that evening. At that time, there were no problems. There was discussion on refinancing bonds from 2010.